All right, and we are recording and we're letting people in.
Should I wait any further for us to begin, or should I get the show on the road?
It looks like we're about eighty-two, eighty-three. It seems like it's trickly now, so I think you're probably good to begin.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this special meeting, virtually. This is a meeting where we are going to primarily focus on our transportation services. So to kick off the meeting, we will start with our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next is going to be our roll call. You're muted.
I had it for a second. There you go. Oh.
Okay, how's that?
That's perfect.
Okay. Mr. Reimers.
Present.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
In attendance.
Ms. Weed. No. Mr. Kern.
Present, present, and in attendance, and here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. McCucci.
I'm here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. And just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and is later viewable online. In case you missed it. Next, we're going to move on to our general public comment. Mrs. Finlayson, if you want to go ahead and start, how many of those do we have this evening?
There is about, I believe, fourteen.
Okay, lots of comments. Let's go.
First one is from Nancy, Stanford Camp of Haycock Township. Levy drivers know the routes, they know the kids. Levy took great precautions during COVID. Let us not forget, caring far outweighs a few dollars when it comes to safety of our kids. Next one is from Nina Psoms of Richland Township. All the bus drivers are great and they help all of the kids. The bus drivers have seen our kids grow into young adults, and that is and that is partial to the drivers. If Levy is not doing it, I will drive my kids. Hope that made sense. The next one is from Jessica Garlic of Milford Township. Please elaborate the rationale that is keeping CYO from using the outdoor track facilities at the sixth grade center this year. As QCSD has determined it's safe to use the track and allow athletes to compete without masks, I fail to see why other community members cannot use the track facilities. Why would an athlete be permitted to use the facilities while on their school team, but not allowed as part of their CYO team? I have three children in the district, two are homeschooled and one attends Saint Isidors. All three will run track for Saint Isidors CYO this year. Practice is currently scheduled to be held in the church parking lot, hardly an adequate substitute. The next one is from Angela Castle of Richland Township. After receiving the email today for transportation, I am asking what is the cost savings to the district from Levy and First Student? Now that the district will employ a transportation coordinator and a router, was First Student offered this option? Is there a new financial analysis to review? What will this cost the district to employ these individuals? I am also left questioning the per day, per vehicle cost of items such as name on the side of bus, numbers on the roof, cameras, internal intercom, etc. These are one-time cost items, yet we will pay per day, per bus. Was it negotiated to pay the cost of the item or pay overtime for the items? Decals for name and numbers are extremely inexpensive, yet the district will be charged $1.25 per day, per bus, for name and $1 per day, per bus, for numbers on roof. Will Levy use a bus with the district name on the side to conduct charter trips? Would a bus with our name on it sit in a parking bar area, etc.? I would ask that this vote be tabled until further information is available. Next comment is from Lori Stefano of Richland Township. I have been working for Levy for four years, and the bond and relationships that I have built with the students and their families is the best. I see students that I have had in previous I see students that I have had in previous years, and they go out of their way to come and say hi and tell me how much they miss me. It's the best feeling in the world to know you made an impact in their lives. We are the first ones to say hi in the morning and goodbye in the afternoon, and that can change their whole outlook for the day. Definitely priceless to me. Please take this into consideration when placing your vote tonight, and the impact it's going to make on the kids' lives as well as all of us that would be losing their jobs. Levy's has always treated their employees like family and stood by their sides no matter what. They are a huge staple in this community. Next comment is from Kim Kimberly-Gold of Haycock Township. I am a resident of Haycock and one of the thirteen district nurses. First, I will tell you I am exhausted both mentally and physically. Secondly, monetary compensation does not make the pain of this school year any less. I cannot regain the lost time with my family or the days and weekends lost to work. I do not have any downtime. We have done virtual hybrid back-to-school in full and made adjustments to do what is necessary to keep schools safe and open. With that being said, I beg of you to not change anything to the present health and safety plan. Anything is in caps to show my frustration and anger over changes to be made to the plan without even having a discussion with any of the nurses. We bear the brunt of these changes with name-calling, angry parents, and frustrated staff trying to do what is best. If you wish to change the present plan, I beg that you put your name on it and come in and explain all the ins and outs of why we do what we do. Next comment is from Charlotte Gepert from Quakertown Borough. Is it true that the contracted cleaning company SSC employees have not been doing the sanitizing of the buildings in the evening as they are required to do? If that is true, will you still continue with their contract? We come into our buildings in the morning believing they are safe when they clearly are not. Next comment is from Kristy Guerra of Milford Township. At a time when pediatric cases are dramatically increasing locally and nationally, changing the health and safety plan to allow modified quarantine seems illogical. The newer variants are infecting children at a higher rate, and they are getting sicker with long-term side effects. It is incredible that school staff has been offered a vaccine, but no pediatric vaccine will be available for some time. My children have been virtual since September, but recently went back to school. The deciding factor was that the current plan demonstrated success in keeping school spread minimal. Why change a plan that is working and keeping people safe, especially while Bucks County remains in the substantial level of community spread? It is unreasonable to change a plan with demonstrated success to something riskier, with a greater chance to lead to closed schools. If the health and safety plan is modified in this way, my stray or kid will go back to virtual, which we absolutely do not want. Next comment is from Shannon Herman of Richland Township. I appreciate the desire and urgency to return to what was normal prior to the pandemic. Admittedly, my kids' academic and mental health have suffered in virtual, but why reduce to modified quarantine now when we are so close to vaccinations? I've counted eight emails since 212 from Strayer notifying of cases, two in my child's class and one that was close contact. He is currently quarantining. Yes, it is awful, but why risk health? Please recognize that modified quarantine is not the choice of optimum safety and health at this time. Next comment is from Joan Moyer of Milford Township. Question one: When will a determination be made on a senior prom event, and if approved, when will this be communicated? Question two: As graduation is quickly approaching, I understand there will be a parade prior to graduation, and a graduation ceremony will be held at Alumni Field. When will the final decision be made on the number of family members that are able to attend the graduation ceremony? When will this be communicated? I understand that these questions may seem a low priority, given the other myriad business initiatives to solve, but the senior class is very anxious regarding these activities as we are in year two of social restrictions. Lastly, a general comment that we approach the evaluation of these ends with fact-based data and safety protocol supporting that data. Last year, there was a great deal of hysteria created regarding the potential of a "super-spreader" event that resulted in teachers opting not to return to the classroom for several days. Let's be composed. Next comment is from Stacy Moises of Richland Township. Changing our health and safety plan to modified quarantine should not be an option for our district. It is noted in the announcement for this upcoming discussion that a change would be made after all staff are vaccinated. It was great to hear that our teachers and staff are being thought of for this change, but it leaves out the critical fact that the majority of students, those under sixteen, do not have a vaccine available yet. As a nation, we are making great strides in increasing access to the vaccine, but we see right here in our area that cases are higher than they were the last time modified quarantine was proposed. To change to such policy when our cases have been increasing is simply irresponsible. COVID has spread in our schools, and we should be doing all we can to reduce any spread from occurring rather than taking away common sense measures that protect our kids and staff. Let me see. Next one is Thomas Morano of Richland Township. Thank you to Mr. V. I'm presenting his ideas on high school graduation recently. As a parent of the class of 2020 and 2021, we have unique insight. We said to the class of 2020, we said we will try to make the end-of-the-year special, and I think we did a good job. The class of 2020 at least had fall and all it brings. The class of 2021 has had nothing. I am asking for two things from the school board. One, that if an outdoor graduation and alumni field can't be held for the entire class and parents, that we find a bigger field. The Univers Center may work and has a sound system already. I am estimating we have a crowd of thirteen hundred people. Based on the new PA outdoor guidelines, we should be able to find a field. Veterans Park in Richland Township could even work. Question two: We should try much harder to have a class of 2021 prom. Outdoor areas like Blue Mountain Ski Resort have said they can host an outdoor wedding of four hundred plus, so this could work. Next comment is from Margaret Staffer of Quakertown Borough. As a nurse in the district for twenty-three years, I was upset that the school board planned to change our health and safety plan with no input from the district's thirteen nurses. Had they asked, I would have told them that I've seen an uptick in COVID-positive elementary children in the past two weeks. Compared to the fall-winter months, these children are more symptomatic and ill for a longer duration. Is this due to a variant? I can't answer that question, but I do know that earlier in the school year, the COVID-positive children were mostly asymptomatic or mildly and briefly ill. I am proud to say that due to the diligence of our Richland staff, I am not aware of any classroom spread at my school. Recently, I've spoken with parents who have been reluctant to send their children back to school. With great confidence, I've told them I believe our existing plan is working. If the board adopts modified quarantine, I will no longer be able to tell parents those reassuring words. Next comment is from Christina I apologize, Kalawaski, who is a nurse in the school district. Good evening. As a Quakertown School Nurse, I am concerned about the proposed move to modified quarantine that will be addressed at tonight's school board meeting. I will be the first to admit that a month ago, I was hopeful. We were seeing fewer cases of COVID in our schools, and our number of close contacts were declining. But in the last two weeks, we have seen our number of cases and close contacts skyrocket at both the elementary and secondary levels, surpassing our case numbers back in January when they were at their highest. My fear is that this upward trend in cases will become the norm, causing COVID to become unmanageable within our schools, leaving our students, community, and staff vulnerable. I implore you to all, please reconsider your plans to change your health and safety plan at this time. Thank you for your time. And there's two more comments. One is from Kathy Infante of Milford Township. Rigorous and high compliance with public health mitigation strategies such as vaccination, physical distancing, use of masks, hand hygiene, and isolation and quarantine is essential to limit the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19 and protect public health. This has been and is the mantra of the CDC. Students, staff, parents, and community members need reminding and encouragement that in the face of pandemic fatigue, we must preserve with vigilance. Without vigilance, pandemic fatigue becomes the obstacle to reaching our end goal. We are getting closer with each week, more and more persons vaccinated. However, we cannot let down our guard. This is when we need to remember this long, extraordinary year. This is when we need to fight to the finish by doing the right thing. And there was one more comment that I know I missed, but I just need to find it one second. It is from Albert Thomas of Haycock Township. My concern is that the aides that are designated to help these students in breakup rooms, and they're not helping the children one-on-one. I witnessed the teacher ask the student a question and replied he didn't know and laughed at the student. Not acceptable or professional. Also, our other child for three days straight has been yelled at and belittled on the virtual class. Totally unacceptable and unprofessional. I would like these teachers to act professional and courteous. And that is the end of public comment.
Thank you for reading those comments. And I believe a lot of the comments that were mentioned, we will be able to address and have a discussion about. So thank you for those comments. Going to move on to our items for board action. We have the approval of transportation services. I'm not sure just how much the board or administration wants to first go into any updates in regards to these proposals prior to our vote.
I would like to hear an update, because I do know that at least Zach could send us an email today. So a little explanation on that would probably be helpful.
Wayne, would you provide the leadership of that, since you are our overall expert and consultant?
Well, thank you, Dr. Hardner. Yes, just today, Zach had received an email from a student or contact there who put together a proposal saying that, based on information he saw that was posted on the district's website, that they were willing to basically cut in half the difference of the savings that we would receive if the board would choose to pick Levy's school bus. So in effect, it would reduce the savings from approximately 1.2 million to about half of that. Now, it was not an official proposal, it was just an email. Nonetheless, it was an email that came from First Student, and everyone thought it was important to share that with the board as well, so they were aware of that information. So the update really is, assuming that they would follow through with that email, there still would be approximately well over a half a million dollars savings over the course of the contract to award the contract to Levy's school bus. Does that help, Chris?
So just to be clear, from my understanding of it, it was a $1.3 billion five-year increase from what Levy proposed. Is that not the correct number?
Yeah, it was somewhere between 1.2 and 1.3. I think I just gave an approximate in the email of 1.3.
So not necessarily savings, it's a it's $600,000 less than they proposed. That's correct, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Over five years.
Right, but the savings is, I guess you're saying Levy's would be a savings to us. I'm saying it's expense. It's a built-in expense, correct?
It is an expense, so Levy
Right, okay.
Thank you. The Levy proposal is less, that's correct.
Yeah, all right.
All right, is there, I mean, I guess we should go ahead and get a motion here so that we can have further discussion. So I'll ask for a motion to approve. There's two different options, and someone can help me out if I'm not correctly verbalizing this. I'll need a motion to approve an option for transportation services for the 2021, 2022 school year, all the way up until the 2025, 2026 school year contingent upon successful contract negotiations. And the district does reserve the right to consider another option if the negotiations are not concluded, and that these options are Option A for Levy's school bus and Option B for a student.
I'll make a motion to accept Option A.
Second, Mr. Jackson.
All right, discussion.
What was that for clarity again? Option A is for Levy's school bus and Option B is for First Student, okay.
Correct.
Levy is on the table.
I'll start off, if you don't mind, Madam President.
Please do.
You know, when being on the committee and hearing all the information, and I want to say thank you to Wayne McCullough. He's done an outstanding job helping us to make sense of all of this. So thank you, Wayne.
Absolutely.
Highly recommend.
When we had the presentations by the two finalists, I came away from that meeting really ready to award the business to the other guys, not Levy. And I came to that conclusion based on the presentations. First Student's presentation was first-rate. It was great. They were obviously prepared. Unfortunately, Mr. Levy was not as prepared. And to me, especially being someone that does presentations for a living, I thought he was rather stunningly ill-prepared. And I voiced that to several of the committee members, and slowly but surely, there began I began to see information from the community, from Levy itself, had some discussions with some people about their performance over the years. We got emails from people in the community as well as people that worked for Levy. And I really began to go back and look and say, is it fair of me to, you know, solely base my decision on what a nice presentation was made? And then I began to think through a lot of the details, such as, you know, Levy being local, they're writing, you know, off of Trump-Awersville Road. If a bus needs to be fixed, it's going to be done there, you know, it's not going to go up to Allentown. And so many of the people that worked there wrote to us saying, you know, how they love their jobs, they love working for Levy, et cetera, and so forth. If you guys know me, you know that I'm a big, you know, fiscal conservative-type person. So the fact that over the five-year length of the contract, that it would save the district somewhere around $1.3 million versus the other bidder, I really thought long and hard about it, and honestly, I changed my mind. I think the right thing to do for the community is to stick with Levy. They did come across with, I think, the improvements that the district was looking for in both technology and staffing. And, you know, that's where I'm coming from on this. I think this is the right decision for us to stay with Levy.
Yeah, I have to agree with Steve. I think that when I went in, I was looking for some things that would benefit students as far as safety, as far as the training for the people. And I agree, Steve was right, the presentation from Levy was less than inspiring. And knowing some of the history, I wasn't sure that I believed they could rise up and meet the challenge. And in the, what was it, about two or three weeks between that and and you know, last time we met, Mr. Levy came and he said some of the right things. He stepped forward, he's made a big commitment to at least moving in that direction. And, you know, I agree, I was in the same position. I was ready to go with First Student. And seeing that movement, seeing that willingness to change, you know, it made me change my mind as well, so.
I'll just say, thank you to both of you for that insight, since I wasn't there. That means a lot regarding, like you said, Steve, that, you know, should you put aside the, what was it, the slickest presentation per se, and then finally getting to the recognition that Levy was able to change and move up to the level that makes you comfortable. So that's good. Thank you very much for that insight.
And I would agree with the gentleman who previously commented. I would agree wholeheartedly that when we heard these presentations, it's difficult, because you can't always make a decision like this based solely on someone's presentation. And so at first thought, I think when we were listening to the presentations, we felt that we weren't really sure how to move forward, just based on that. But I understand that, you know, Levy has been in this district, the family business, almost for a hundred years. And we did hear a lot from the community that they have a lot of loyalty and trust with them. And I think that our proposal, our RFP, a request for proposal, really does lay out very well our expectations and how we are going to move forward and what we're going to what criteria that we have in place and what we're going to expect. And so I feel more comfortable knowing that those criteria are very well laid out and that we will be able to have some accountability with that. And I was really happy to see Levy step up to the plate and show that they really are willing to put their best foot forward and that they they're willing to step up to the challenge. So that was very encouraging for me to see. And I think that's why our committee was recommending them to choose them as we move forward. Any other discussion before we take a roll call vote?
I just wanted to bring up that I did a little bit of research as well with school districts that are utilizing First Student that that hadn't been listed as references on First Student's proposal. And that is what helped me to decide to want to stay with Levy as well. Not to mention, you know, I am familiar with them, and I'm familiar with any of the past downfalls we have had with Levy. And I have a better understanding and a better feeling for how we could move forward with those. And as Ms. Mitchell said, you know, I think that just our RFP process has laid a lot of that out and is going to help us to be able to communicate better where we want to move in the future with our transportation. So, you know, I sort of did it as the old-school job-interviewing way, where I actually where I actually interviewed school districts that utilize them. So that's how I have come up with the decision that I'm going to be making.
And of course, we appreciate the time and care that First Student has put into the whole process because I think that we all understand that there's a lot of investment of time put into these types of things. And so we appreciate both of these companies putting their best foot forward. So it sounds like we're ready for a roll call vote unless anyone opposes that. Alright, let's go.
So this is for option A?
So a yes would be to vote on the motion to approve option A, Levy School Bus. And a no would be to not approve that.
Okay, Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
The motion passes eight to nothing, eight to zero.
Congratulations Levy on continuing your family business in Quicker Town. And again, Mr. McCullough, we cannot thank you enough. You've really been top-notch professional and, and helping us to navigate through all of this. So we really appreciate all of your expertise and your assistance.
Yes, Wayne, thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, I'm very impressed with the board and your collaboration and the diligence you've taken. So well done. Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
And I'll make one comment if he's out there listening to Wayne Levy. I will personally help you to brush up on your presentation skills if you would like.
Very, it's a nice offer. Alright.
I would want to remain his most important client, though.
Okay, we're going to move on to our redistricting. And as some of you are aware, there was a lot of feedback from the community regarding a change to the, the boundaries in regards to Parkside Estates and the surrounding area at Poff Elementary and Oak Knoll Development and surrounding area assigned to Trump Bowersville. And, and so what the board instructed, and actually, Ms. Edwards, she proactively started looking into this as soon as the last board meeting concluded. And so we do appreciate her proactively taking a look at this. And I believe that we have a conclusion here that we, that will make a lot of folks happy. So before I ask Ms. Edwards to elaborate a little bit further, I'll ask for a motion to approve those changes that I just previously mentioned.
So move, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Akmanowicz will second.
Ms. Edwards, would you like to elaborate on your research and what you're able to recommend?
Sure. I believe some of the confusion stemmed from the, Wentz Hicken Valley closed and the Oak Knoll neighborhood. There were two different versions of the map that was used at that time. One was revised. And I think that perhaps the committee was using the older version in making their recommendation, thinking that Oak Knoll had been assigned to Poff, which was not ultimately the case. So in any case, going through all of the information, we can draw contiguous lines. So nobody, nobody will be a little island in the middle of another, another school community. So we can draw contiguous lines that would keep Parkside Estates at Poff Elementary and would keep Oak Knoll at Trump Bowersville Elementary. And that would disrupt 31 less students in grades, rising K through four. So fifth graders, rising fifth graders, I didn't include in that number because they would have the choice in any case. And so after looking at it more closely, I do not see any reason not to recommend making that change to avoid disrupting those students. Numerically, it works out almost exactly the same. There isn't, there is no differential of more than two students, like the plus minus. Then the plus minus is no more than two students at any grade level. So that's certainly not significant enough to change the overall impact of the plan. So, so I, I would recommend that the board proceed to approve that, that change.
Thank you. Any discussion on this?
I'd just like to thank the administration for taking this seriously and taking a look at it. I, I know that, you know, we got a lot of feedback from the community about this and I think we're doing the right thing. So thank you, everyone.
One thing I want to comment on about it is we knew going into this that we were going to disrupt a lot of parents, a lot of families. We didn't take that lightly, but we knew it was necessary. And I know a lot of parents reacted strongly when they found out that they were individuals who would be affected by this. But I do want to point out that a lot of parents from these two neighborhoods immediately contacted us and suggested that, you know, this doesn't make any sense to individual developments comparable size. Why not just leave them where they were? I just want to speak to the parents out there. It, it's, it's difficult for us as board members to respond to every parent in a positive manner when they request that we change something in the way we do things simply to benefit that family. But there are times when families do bring things to us and we can look at them and say, you know, that's not a bad idea. That's, that's something we can do for you. So I don't want to discourage families out there from coming, bringing their petitions to the board. We do listen. We do hear. A lot of times we can actually make the change you're looking for. So I'm happy to say this is one instance like that.
Cutting out a little bit, buddy. But I got the gist. I think we got the gist. Uh, any other comments? Alright, we're going to move on to a vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me.
We did not need to roll call since everybody said yes.
Oh, it did say roll call, didn't it? Sorry.
Okay.
Whoops. Okay, next on our agenda is the Transportation Coordinator. I'll need a motion to approve adding additional FTEs for Transportation Director and Coordinator.
So move, Mr. Kern.
I'll second it, Mr. Klein.
Okay, discussion.
Kayla, clarify, that's only one position, right? Not a director and a coordinator, right?
That is my understanding.
I'd like to talk about that since it was, I think it was addressed in a public comment earlier this evening. This position and the funding for this position was taken out of the contract, understanding that due to a pending or a near-future personnel change out at Levy Bus, their expert in routing would be gone, plus best practices that Wayne McCullough, I believe, sir, you have, you're still here. That you, so you can confirm this for me. Best Practices has the, the routing, Transportation Coordinator, routing expert, all that. The one who designs all the routes and also is the face of transportation is inside the district. And, and please, Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, best practices.
You are correct, Dr. Hardner. It is a best practice. In fact, it's typically recommended by the Auditor General as well to have routes that are done in-house by personnel located in the district. And I also believe when you look at transportation, obviously there's two sides. We talked about the expense side tonight. There's also a very important subsidy side. And I also believe there's an opportunity for the board to have somebody trained as an expert in routing and subsidy. I think there'll be a return on investment in this position as well.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Um, do we need to do a roll call for this?
I wanted to have some comments.
Oh, sure. Oh, go ahead.
Um, so I, I had looked into this Transportation Coordinator with the IU's district or countywide survey that they did. And if you remove all the Assistant Directors of Transportation on that, the average salary in Bucks County, and you remove Palisades, because Palisades actually does a 60-40 split with their transportation company on the funding of their Transportation Coordinator. The average salary of the Transportation Coordinators for the 2019-20 school year was 103,789.87. So that, that is directly from the IU survey here. And, you know, that, that's an expensive position. And, you know, it, it's something that, that we will all be undertaking if we do this. And, you know, I mean no offense by this, Wayne, but you suggesting this as the PASBO representative gives you another PASBO member in our school district, doesn't it? So i- is it kind of in, you know, just like if you asked any other teacher, should we hire more teachers? They're going to say yes. Or if you, you had asked Ryan Wean, the QCEA Director, if, if we need more teachers, he's always going to say, yes, we need more teachers. So, you know, and, and I don't mean anything by this, but wouldn't the PASBO representative also say, you know, you need more business officials? So I.
I don't know that that's fair to equate the two. I think he just said that that's what most places do. That's all.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, I, I did want to also just mention though, that the average salary, so, you know, come year two or year three, we're going to get this request to say our Transportation Coordinator is making $20,000 less than the other districts in Bucks County. We need to then pay them another $20,000 more. So that will come up in a couple of years, I'm sure.
So, go ahead, Dave.
May I, Chris? Is it cool?
I, I'm finished. I just wanted to bring up what I looked up.
Prices with Levy were kind of reduced because we have the full fourth sight to know that the person who is on staff over there that helps coordinate these particular duties right now for us at no cost is going to be leaving, is what you've told us. And we need to prepare for that by hiring this person. Do I understand that correctly?
It, it, David, it is a cost and it's part of our current contract with them. That's all part of that. And our RFP said we were going to pull that, that cost from whomever gets it in-house. So we were going to pay it respectfully, Chris, one way or the other.
Okay. So they reduced their fee for those services that they provided to us at one time, which we need somebody to do.
Now, I, I will tell you that with Peasars on there, I mean, to be totally transparent, to give Chris some argument there for his side, Peasars is expensive. But I would say that, how many transportation companies are members of PASBO?
Yeah. First of all, thank you. Let me, I, I appreciate the opportunity just to address it briefly. The important thing is, just like all of your business operations that you have, that in all of your operations, and I know you and I know, working with Zach and you many times, the concept of having internal controls is very, very important to you. And the integrity of the internal controls and all of your business operations is very important. So if you look at having somebody do internal routing, it really is an internal control. It also, you know, you could certainly make the argument and why it's important from the Auditor General standpoint, that the person who's creating the routing and assigning vehicles is not the same person who's also receiving payment for those vehicles. So it's a very important internal control, similar other controls you have in your business office. You typically would not have a contractor create any processes in place when they are the ones who are being compensated for that service. So that, that is really a major issue, number one. Number two, again, when, from an internal control standpoint, the contractors, really good contractors, and I believe Levy is, is interested in cost control. We heard that from them. They are not experts in maximizing subsidy. The state formula is the most complicated subsidy formula of any that school districts have before. And it is, it takes experts who are very conscious of trying to maximize subsidy to do the routing. Something simple as combining elementary and a secondary run to maximize the number of children and the number of miles on the vehicle could result in thousands of dollars of additional subsidy for the district. So it's a very detailed process that takes a lot of time and expertise to be successful. And then finally, I think, and I don't mind saying, I think some of the reason that there was an appeal from another contractor based on the services provided was because the school district did not have an internal liaison to work directly as a liaison between building principals, special education departments, to make sure the needs and the trainings are taking place to, to again, make sure that the bus services are effective. So I think you will receive many, many benefits. Certainly much more benefits than PASBO would receive from one additional member.
The other question I had, if we would have an internal Transportation Coordinator, would, would parents that would call in with questions about bus stops and all that would go straight to the district, not to Levy then, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's something that we would work through with Levy through the transition process. So obviously, we would not take all of that on in year one with one person, but that, you know, that's something we would work out with them. What makes the most sense for, for the district now that we have an internal person? Also knowing that we have entire office of Levy staff that we're, you know, paying for through the contract. So that would certainly be something we would be discussing with them. You just said an entire office and I'm thinking to myself, man, it seems like a whole full-time job for just that. This is what I'm thinking to myself.
The reason I brought up what I brought up was more to brace us for what would be in the future if we did hire a Transportation Coordinator, because on, on this list, you know, there, there are not that many Transportation Coordinators making in that range of 75,000 to 85,000. So we may get one at, at a discount that's inexperienced in the beginning, but in a few years, we will be paying a six-figure salary. And what Dr. Hardner was about to say was once you add the, the Peasars into all that and stuff, you know, it's a lot of money. That's two to three teachers worth of money.
Can we ask the employee for their ROI statement there, Wayne, at the end of each year? I'm just kidding. I know. I'm just kidding.
No, I think they'll be able to.
I, I feel very have, content with moving this to a vote, Ms. President.
Alright, uh, let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Alright, the next item on our agenda is really to talk about the Health and Safety Plan. And I appreciate all of the comments that were given from the community in regards to this. And I understand that it's a very, a very sensitive topic anytime that we're talking about changing the Health and Safety Plan. It's interesting, I feel like the same people who commented from the very beginning of our school district reopening are the same ones that have commented on their concerns, including the nurses who I, I fully appreciate. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Damsker. I feel Dr. Damsker unfortunately has been vilified in a lot of ways throughout our county, throughout certain leadership within the county. And he faced a really difficult position in looking at the data and making a recommendation based on his expertise that was possibly or was unpopular at the time. And now we're starting to see his recommendations, our leadership in this school district. We're ahead of the game in a lot of ways. We're ahead of the curve in a lot of ways. And, and, and so for all of the heat, for And 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 so for all of the heat, for all of the negative comments that were given to Dr. Damsker, we are now seeing that schools are a safe environment. They are the best place for our kids to be. The the in-rate in-school transmission is minimal. I know there was a public comment that said that COVID was spreading within our schools. That's categorically false. It's just simply not true. The thing that's really difficult about these things is 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 trying to utilize data, facts, and evidence to combat emotion. Because I feel there are certainly a group of people who are meaning, they mean well, and they look at things in a safety, a sort of a safetyism culture. And so their heart is certainly in the right place. But I want to try and provide some context into why the board is considering things like modified quarantine. I believe, and I will allow the administration, you know, some time to to explain their their thoughts and opinions on this. Modified quarantine, if you take a look, I think the most important thing to do when we're taking a look at our practices is to evaluate how effective they are. And we're constantly trying to reevaluate the effectiveness of our practices. And so you could certainly argue, well, if it's not broke, don't fix it. But but is that is that true? So we've quarantined approximately nine hundred students since the beginning. And from my understanding, not one of those students have later tested positive. And if I'm wrong about that, then that number is extremely low. Not only looking at Quakertown, if you look at the surrounding school districts who have utilized modified quarantine, which is Palisades, Pen Ridge, the Upper Bucks Technical School, they have all also utilized modified quarantine. And in in those scenarios, we have had minimal spread from those that are quarantined. And so everything that we look at should be looked at in a risk benefit way. And I know that some people want to look at things as as the only way that we move forward is if we have absolutely zero cases of this. But what you have to look at, we had a presentation today that was given to us by the middle school for any board members who weren't able to attend. I will share with you, there's there's a very large gap between the students who are virtual and their academic performance and mental health than those who are in school. So every single time that we that a student who may be unlucky to sit next to another student who happens to have had COVID, then they have to stay home for ten days. And and so keeping those students home, what we're saying is that, in effect, the reason we're doing that is to keep everyone safe. But what about the safety of those students who are having to stay home for ten days? Again, we heard from the middle school staff, leadership, that we're seeing a significant amount of mental health issues occurring within our our middle school students due to having to take on more responsibility at home due to the virtual learning environment, due to the stress that is is occurring within families. And so all those things should be in the back of our mind when when we're talking about keeping our kids in schools as much as possible, as much as as all possibility that we can. So so frankly, for the people, and no offense, but as well as the nurses, from the very beginning, we were called crazy. I was told comments that if someone died, it was my fault. So many nasty comments that we received, and we had the courage as school board members to stand in the face of scrutiny to say that we were going to do what was right for our kids, because we knew that despite some very harsh criticism, that it was the right thing to do for for our kids. So so understanding the data, reevaluating that data to see if if it is effective, not only within our district, but also other districts. We're seeing that this modified quarantine is effective. It is working. And the other thing that I did want to bring up was for the board to discuss. And we could look at this one at a time, but I'm just sort of giving my president's report to express my opinions about this is our attestation process. So for those of you who are not familiar, maybe some on the board or maybe others who are in the audience and who are not familiar, we have an attestation process. There was an order that was given to us from from Secretary Levine, Rachel Levine. She did inform us that we had to sign an attestation form to the Pennsylvania Department of Education that would state that we would follow guidance that was outlined to us. And as long as Bucks County was in the substantial category, that we would need to to follow that guidance. And of course, myself, as your school board president, as well as Dr. Harner, the superintendent, did sign that attestation. And the concern that a lot of the board members have are these closures that are occurring when we reach the minimum threshold of the number of cases within a fourteen-day rolling period. Many times, parents are told late at night, you know, pretty much leaving them very little time to coordinate care for their students who would need to be virtual based on, let's say, two out of the, given example, the elementary school, let's say, there were two cases within a fourteen-day rolling period. Once our job and what what the attestation actually states is that schools who have a jurisdiction with a local health department should work with the local health department when responding to the cases of COVID nineteen in a school setting. I spoke to Mr. Garten earlier today to try and understand who ultimately has authority over this attestation. Our administration has informed us, they believe that the authority lies within the Pennsylvania Department of Education. However, from a legal standpoint, from from being advised from our attorney, as well as from communication that we receive from the Pennsylvania Department of Health and our local health department, Dr. Damsker, we have the flexibility within our local school district to work with our health department when responding to these cases and that we do not have to take the lower end of the range to trigger a closure, AKA virtual day for our students. Yet we have been doing that. That's exactly what we've been doing. We have not been fully utilizing that flexibility. And my question to the administration has been, how does this keep our community safer? And I think that is the question that really needs to lie in the minds of all of us as board members is, why are we recommending the practices that we are? How does it keep our students safer? When it comes to modified quarantine, quarantining all of these students, when we have seen such a minimal amount of nine hundred kids having to be quarantined for at least ten days, how has that helped keep our community safer? How is triggering a closure for a small number of cases within a fourteen-day period? How does that keep our community safer? So that's really what I wanted to discuss as a board is, and and I certainly do not want the nurses to feel in any way that we're not consulting with you all, because, as you know, we've had already votes on modified quarantine. This is probably the third time that it's coming up. Every single teacher, and correct me if I'm wrong, every teacher who wants to be vaccinated will have been vaccinated by this Friday. So the the risk that we know, the risk that we know for our for teachers will be low, because we will have a significant amount of teachers who will have been vaccinated by the end of this week. The risk to our students has always been minimal. From my understanding, we have not had any student in Bucks County since the beginning of this pandemic has been hospitalized due to COVID. This is my, this is based on my conversations with Dr. Damsker. And if he said if there are any, that he is not aware of them. So the comments that we're receiving about variants, about children, we have to be really careful to look into the data and what it suggests about our younger children. As far as the variants, these vaccines are extremely effective, and we should be hopeful and so happy and grateful that these vaccines are providing, even though in some cases, they may not protect against the variant, but they are protecting against severe illness and death of the variant. And that's really what we have to be looking at here is the the total risk. And and the risk to our students, as I've mentioned before, is low. So got to be careful about how we make these decisions and the overall benefit versus risk of of moving forward. So with that, I guess I should probably allow the administration, if you guys would like to respond. Actually, before I do that, I'll 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 get to you all next. Mr. Garten, would you be able to confirm what I mentioned earlier in regards to the attestation process? And how you're seeing that being implemented across the county?
Well, the other thing you should understand, maybe you ought to say, is when you talk about the lower range and the higher range, you're not talking about two to a thousand. You're talking about two to four. They're very close ranges. So it's not a significant deviation between the minimum range and the maximum range. You're not talking about going over the maximum. You're just talking about being able to work within that range. But the characterization of the ranges was derived from the Pennsylvania Department of Health based on the medical information available. And as you can see from the series of emails back and forth between Dr. Damsker and the Department of Health, they are comfortable with being able to operate within the range as opposed to being the minimum range. And those regulations were were derived from health issues, not education issues. Now, I understand that some concern on the part of commissioned officers, that whether or not they're putting their commission at risk because they're violating a PD directive. But if the board makes a decision, then the commissioned officers really are not going to be jeopardized by virtue of that action. But I, my opinion is that the Pennsylvania Department of Health has blessed working within the range.
Thank you, Mr. Garten. All right, before I move it on to a board discussion, before we even, you know, put a motion on the table, I'd like to to offer time for the administration to share your thoughts.
Thank you, ma'am. But I would request to hear more of the other concerns that are out there, so we can have the full scope of the the concerns about how effective we've been or haven't been over the last eight months, seven months. And so we can answer them in turn. As you can see, we have elevated up to the panel as a panelist, our lead, one of our two lead nurses, Melissa Kelly, who can articulate what she's seeing every day and what's been reported to her. But a couple of things that about attestation, as I shared with the board in an email at four o'clock this afternoon, I just got out of a meeting with all the superintendents of the county. The only school district in Bucks County that is not using the lower number is Council Rock. So it's so that's what's going on across the county.
I am being told that no disrespect, sir, but that is
I don't take it disrespect. I'm just
It's just false. It's not true. And Mr. Garten cannot can actually attest to that as well, that the other school districts are not having closures due to being on the low end of the range. Now, you can argue that they're not using the range, that they're using the lower number. But perhaps that means that when they have that first case, once they're able to do the contact tracing and the sanitizing, that that case would no longer count. So the bottom line is that school districts in Bucks County are not triggering virtual
agree with you one hundred percent, ma'am. The other twelve superintendents were lying to me today.
I can, I mean, I can only go based off of
Let me just jump in, diffuse. It doesn't matter. You stated an observation. You stated what the other board member said. And and we can't adjudicate that. And it could have been how it was worded. Who the hell knows? But let's move on.
Thank you.
Fair enough. So so I, again, it really boils down to, is it effective or not? And so what I want to know before hearing from other board members is what how many, how many cases from all the students that we have quarantined have later tested positive? From your your tracking of this, those particular quarantine students?
Ms. Edwards or Melissa, I'll let you answer the on the data question.
The data is somewhat incomplete because not all students that are excluded are tested. So any of them that were positive but asymptomatic wouldn't be included. But students that were later reported to us as being positive, there were thirty eight cases approximately, based on the the data that we have available, which is not, obviously not comprehensive.
So thirty eight out of like nine hundred.
And how many do we know definitively were from in-school spread? Because I have heard countless times from our administration that we have not had any in-school spread.
I think there is minimal in-school spread, but there are certain situations, especially on transportation, where we can't rule it out. There have been particular classrooms, but they have specialized programs in them where it's pretty clear that spread occurred in the classroom. But for the for the most part, it has been, I would say, very minimal.
So thirty eight out of nine hundred would be four point two percent.
That's what we know of. And again, we don't know how many of the close contacts that are excluded were positive but asymptomatic, meaning that nothing happened that caused them to to get a test and find out if they were positive.
Okay, so we can only go based off of what we know, and it sounds like it's extremely minimal. What are other board members' thoughts on this?
Well, back in the summer, when we were discussing opening and and whatnot and various different approaches, yeah, we we agreed that we'd take certain risk mitigating measures, and we agreed that we'd monitor and adjust. So to me, you know, the to focus risks solely on one axis, that is, if the only thing that mattered was cases, and it doesn't matter if kids are in school, then let's go for, you know, just caring about cases. But if we care about a better educational experience being in school and the risk is low, then we should have a discussion. Because we've, you know, back in the summer, we didn't have this experience. We have a ton of experience now. It's no longer a mystery. Matter of fact, I've been thinking about this for a long time. Are we over cautious? Are we erring on the side of chasing a number? Even an asymptomatic case, that's not a case in the old days. That's just a number on a chart. Those aren't not cases. Cases require symptoms. But nonetheless, we don't have many of them, so it doesn't matter the the philosophy of what a case is. But the point is, risk mitigation is not just one thing to be concerned about. And we need to care about the kids. And the kids being in school is the best approach for their education, and we shouldn't shortchange that aspect during this discussion of you know, what's the best course of action? Does it need to be ten days? Can it be less? Does it need to be triggered at two or can it be triggered at four? Right? What if we go to three? What if we tried and if it back, you know, if it backfires, we can put it back. The point is, doing no change and just letting it roll is potentially a disservice to the children. And there's no spread to the, you know, the idea is you know, is this danger to the teachers? I think we've got plenty of data to show, no. And even the teachers quarantining, I'm sure that's disruptive to their lives. And, you know, we should consider their well-being and not just caring about the numbers. And, you know, we should consider their wellbeing and not just caring about the numbers. I'm tired of just caring about the numbers and not caring about people. So anyway, that's my opinion, the evidence is overwhelming, kids are the most, at, at no risk of, almost no risk of harm. They don't transmit and we're, you know, we're, as long as we protect the vulnerable, we should consider relaxing the quarantine numbers and get kids in school more. Especially as summer's going on, you know. Vitamin D is up. Anyway, that's my opinion.
One of, and, and feedback to you, John, I, and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly about using more than just one metric about it. But as we want the kids to be back in school. Our biggest academic challenges, we had in the presentation right before this meeting about the middle school and that you all were received a couple of months ago about the high school, is our students that aren't coming to school. And as we opened up the doors to going from the hybrid to the live model at the secondary levels, our numbers went from 24% of the kids staying home to 34% of the kids staying home by Christmas to over 40% of the kids staying at home. So by, by putting in, being loose or is not going to get more kids back in school, I would submit from.
How do you know?
You don't know.
I would argue that there, there are.
I don't know what tomorrow brings.
Well, no, I'm just saying, how do you know that the reason the children are staying away is because we're lax?
Can, can you guys hear me? It's Keith.
Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
So I, I would argue that, that, that the kids are actually staying home because they're afraid to get quarantined more.
Yeah, tell them about your experience, Keith, because this is important.
I just, I, I know that kids are fearful. Especially who, who play sports and do activities that the school is going to quarantine them for reasons that are out of their control. So they're doing everything right and they get quarantined from school. And we've seen this with sports, we've seen this with extracurricular activities where kids of their no wrongdoing, they're following every rule we put in place and yet we quarantine them with, with really no data to support what we're doing. None. This isn't scientific what we're doing. Because if we were following the science, we would agree that the science is pointing us in the direction that modified quarantine works. But we did, just like, just like we, we were, we were arguing the point of distance, social distancing, five, six months ago. The meta-analysis that I sent out to the entire board had said that three feet was adequate. The CDC just relaxed it two weeks ago. Had we, had we have followed the CDC's guidelines, we weren't following the science. So these, these decisions that we're making, I feel like are very emotional for some reason. That aren't, that aren't giving us the right, we're not, we're not taking the right path on emotional decisions. And while I was agreeing with modified quarantine to get our kids back, or sorry, not agreeing with modified quarantines, especially when the numbers were elevated in December. As we see this trending down. And we know that, that, the, the, the conversion rate of these, these kids going from, that are, that are on quarantine is very low. It's less than five, less than 0.5%. Even if we agreed that that data is, is marginal, it's less than 1%. There, there's, there's no spread in schools. Or limited spread in schools. Are we really helping the students?
Thank you, Keith.
I, I would like to hear what Nurse Melissa Kelly has to say, I know she's here, I'd like to hear what she, what her opinions are.
Hi, Mr. Klein, thanks for that invitation. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Melissa Kelly, I'm one of the high school nurses and I'm a co-coordinator for the nursing department. And like a lot of people in the community today, I was notified that the board is considering adopting modified quarantine tonight. And each board meeting, with the exception of this one, because it was a, a special meeting, we, our department usually submits a report for the board to review, which is shared as a read-only document with the community. But the nurses would really appreciate some direct communication with the board when changes are being proposed to the health and safety plan. Because while we understand that you represent the community, you likely get hundreds of emails and comments from parents. You, you read up on, on the science, where are your frontline when it comes to COVID in the school community? And I can see that over, I can say that over the past two weeks, we've seen a huge uptick in our positive COVID cases with numbers that we haven't seen since December and January. And I know that the modified quarantine is proposed to begin on April 8th, once all the staff members have had an opportunity to become vaccinated. But I think we also need to consider the parents and grandparents and guardians in the community who haven't had that opportunity yet. And the fact that vaccines aren't yet approved for children under 16. Changing to modified quarantine has the potential to negatively impact these individuals. And I know that many of you feel as though we've quarantined 900 plus students for no reason. But as a healthcare professional, I don't think that that's an entirely accurate statement because we don't require testing to come back to school. Students who have been identified as a close contact may have been asymptomatic positively. And I can tell you through some observations that we had several students at different periods in time who were identified as close contacts. And although they were never tested and never tested positive while they were quarantined, their parents became positive. And I'm forced to wonder in these situations, could the student have been asymptomatic and spreading that virus? And we will never know for sure, but I think it's a valid concern. And in the past two weeks at the high school, I've seen three cases that could be attributed to school spread, which is a new development. As we hadn't really seen spread in the classrooms prior to this. And our elementary school nurses have reported that they're seeing the kids in their buildings who have tested positive for COVID have been much sicker than earlier in the school year when it was often just, you know, maybe a runny nose and congestion for a few days, that these kids are really down and out right now. And it could be possible that these changes could be attributed to variants that are more transmissible. And some studies from other countries are showing that these variants impact children at a higher rate than, than the original virus. And a month ago, I would have been on board with modified quarantine, our numbers were looking good, I was hopeful that things were improving. But right now, it feels like things are changing and evolving and my colleagues and I aren't currently comfortable with considering the change with the current spike in cases and with this, the, the first couple of cases of school spread. People are going to be congregating over the Easter holiday. And the plan is to implement modified quarantine on April 8th, which is five days after Easter. And most people who develop symptoms become symptomatic between day five and seven. So this might not be the best time to consider that change. And when the board makes changes to the health and safety plan, it falls on us nurses to implement and enforce those changes. And if I'm being honest, we're currently exhausted. This has been the most trying year of most of our careers, there's only 13 of us, there's 5,000 students, there's a, nearly 1,000 staff members, countless parents and guardians. Personally, I've been working 12 to 14 hours most day and I rarely get an uninterrupted night or weekend. And I know the same is true for all my colleagues. I've spent countless hours working on COVID-related matters and each time the plan changes, it adds to our workload and to parental confusion. And I really just don't know for the nurses, how much of, how much more of that we can sustain. We totally understand as a department that learning virtually is not the most effective for all students and that being quarantined presents challenges to students and their parents, and we're sympathetic to that. But we're also accountable for the health and safety in our school communities. And right now, with the changes we're seeing, we feel the plan should remain as it has been. We have 10 to 12 weeks left in the school year and our current plan's been working well to mitigate school spread. The nursing department asks that you consider delaying the consideration of modified quarantine until next school year. At that time, more people in our community, not just our school buildings, will have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. We'll have more data on variants and maybe we'll have a timeline on when a vaccine will be available to the children.
Thank you very much, Nurse Kelly, I appreciate your insight.
So, so I gotta, I gotta, I do got a question, when you, when you, Ms. Kelly, do you, when you quote the word huge, what does that represent?
In, in what context, Mr. McCucci, I'm sorry?
You said, you said that we've seen a huge uptick, what does that represent?
So I, I had several weeks where I had very few cases and I'm now, I get positive cases nearly every day, they don't all count in our ruling 14. Richland Elementary School has had seven cases in less than a week, which for their small community has been quite challenging for them. We also are seeing numbers of, of, of close contacts and contact tracing and things that are higher. You know, I think we're in the 281 range for students who are on quarantine or out of school because they're being tested, their parents are positive with COVID, they're a close contact from the community, we're getting more and more phone calls every day about family members who are testing positive. It's just, we had a lull and we're seeing numbers again like we are seeing in, in December and January.
Do you have an idea?
Thank you.
Sure.
Nurse Kelly, do you have an idea what, what would make you comfortable? What, what thresholds would you look for? To reopen or?
Honestly, a month ago, I would have been comfortable with it. Our numbers were down. I agree that school spread wasn't happening, I have a special needs child that had been virtual that I sent back to school this month because I felt so confident that things had improved. But I'm back to, you know, I walked into four positive cases Monday morning. Which is, is a lot for one school to handle in one day with all the contact tracing. You know, I, I am seeing kids who were close contacts of other kids now that they're getting tested to try to come back sooner, testing positive. And I, I just, I don't want to jump the gun and have it turn into, because truly, we're 13 people, I don't know how much more we can do. So if the decision to go with modified quarantine leads to a, a larger increase in cases, I don't know how we'll keep up with the contact tracing, the parent phone calls, the unending hours of trying to figure out busing and contact tracing. I mean, I don't think anyone can understand exactly what it looks like to be a nurse right now. I know a lot of people kind of turn their nose up at school nursing and don't really recognize it as a challenging area of nursing to work in, which I would disagree with even in a typical year. But the amount of data and students and parents and, and the constant changing, it's, it's really challenging. Like I'm, I do the bulk of the COVID work for the high school, I do have other nurses who work with me who take care of seeing our, our traffic in the office with sick kids and the, the COVID stuff is just unending.
I just, I just want to make a comment and look, we appreciate for sure what you guys are doing, you're on the front lines. But isn't it true that the nurses were very much opposed to us bringing students back into a classroom at less than six foot of distance? And weren't the nurses extremely concerned and voicing? What's the word?
Opposition?
Strong opposition to the board and sending us multiple communications that you all did not feel comfortable from us moving from a hybrid to a full five-day back model.
I think like the teachers, we did have concerns because we didn't know what that would look like, we don't have a crystal ball. And, and I totally understand what you're saying about, you know, that we need to make data-driven decisions. I'm just telling you that it's starting to look different in person on the front line. And when you make these decisions, we're, we're the people who have to carry that load then after that and implement and explain it to the parents. Because how many parents are on the board meeting tonight, probably not many. So parents don't realize the changes are happening, it, it causes massive amounts of confusion. And it, it, it's a challenge every day that every single time we make these changes, it adds to our workload and we're.
So Miss, Miss Kelly. It's Keith again, is this a workload issue that if we change it, you're concerned that there's going to be an increase in the amount of workload you're going to have? In other words, is there more help that we need to get, you guys?
I am, I am concerned.
As, as opposed to, as opposed to the, the public health crisis that?
I am concerned about the students and the fact that I have started seeing school spread that, you know, I do realize I can't unequivocally prove, but that I have students in the past two weeks where I haven't had that all year, that all of a sudden, my student who was a close contact of case A is a po, is positive a day or two later, and then a close contact of that is positive a day or two later, and then another close contact is positive a day or two later. Like I just, I feel like things are changing, I think the other nurses agree with me that it feels like things are changing right now. And I just would hate to make a change like this and see it blow up in our faces that we end up with a ton of sick kids.
I don't think, I think, I think we all share in a similar context that we don't want to see anybody get sick, right? So that's, that's not our, our motive at all. I think my approach has always been that at any point, we should be able to pivot and, and, and ratchet things down. It, it's interesting that we're seeing all this and, and yet the, the public health official from our county is, is kind of speaking the opposite. And so I'd be interested to know wh, where that comes from, is, is, are we able to get Dr. Damsker to attend?
Oh, actually, actually, I can, I, I wasn't aware that we were going to have a conversation with our nurses or else I would have had him teed up. But I can see if he can get on the horn with us right now because I think he could probably share some expertise.
He's at a conference with his daughter tonight.
Okay.
I spoke to him right before the meeting.
Well, just so you know, Mr. McCucci, I do report to, to the health department if I do feel like they, I, I do point out when I send over my contact tracing that this case was related to this case that has already been sent over to you. So I have reported that, whether or not Dr. Damsker has had an opportunity to review that, I can't speak to.
No, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you're, you know, what you're, what you're saying is, is, and that's, that's really where I'm conflicted right now, is what you're saying is somebody who's watching a little bit, you know, closer from a Quaker Town perspective is saying something different than what we're hearing from our county official who's reporting our numbers. And so I just wanted to kind of understand that disconnect. I, I do recognize the stress of, of being a nurse in the midst of the pandemic, trust me. I think if there's anybody on this board that gets that, it's me. And, and, and I can appreciate it. I, I just, I do worry about what we're doing and whether, you know, it's, it's making an, an impact and, and.
And we certainly.
It's affecting, it's, it's affecting kids' decisions, I mean, you know, the, the flip side of it is, you know, had we have not gone back, we would be suffering more, the kids would be suffering more from mental and, and illness, more than we're seeing today and, and which is a huge increase from what we saw last year. They're seeing higher failure rates than we've ever seen before. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that are, are really pushing to, to, you know, me to make the decisions that kids need to be in school. They can be protected, they can be in school, spread is very low in school, they got a better chance of getting it in the community. You know, as I drive by the park and everybody's, you know, playing and there's, the basketball courts are packed and the skate park and things along those lines, so I don't know.
And believe me, the nurses want students in school too. I know that, that, that might not be the perception that you all have of us, but we do, we want to see our students, we want to see them in school, we want them to succeed. You know, as I said, I'm a parent in the district, I just sent my own student back who I can't really pull back out of school again because he does have special needs and to have changed like that so frequently, but it, it does make me uncomfortable even as a parent that we're thinking about changing to modified quarantine because I did make my decisions based on how solid the data was looking. And, and, you know, but I, I understand your point of view as well and I certainly don't want kids to suffer. But I, I just don't want to jump the gun and end up with a huge problem.
So, Mrs. Kelly. I could just say one thing.
Go ahead.
So, Nurse Kelly, the perception I have of you is one who cares deeply, is genuine and is, you know, I appreciate everything you're doing, everything you're saying. And what I wonder is, what if there's some kind of, as you said, a month ago, all for it? Now, you're a little iffy, maybe three weeks from now, good, or depending which way things go. So is there some threshold that maybe we could set where we see cases at a certain level? Trends at a certain level? Modified quarantine kicks in. And if it spikes, modified quarantine kicks out. Like it doesn't have to be black and white, A and B, left or right, up or down. It could be something actually that, that actually reflects, even if it is a bit of a gut instinct, that reflects something that we can at least track and look at and have something behind it.
I could appreciate a system like that, Mr. Kern.
So I, I, I had a, a question then to, to bring up. So today, when I talked to Dr. Damsker, actually right before our, our middle school meeting today. And he, he had mentioned today that we had two positive cases here and 37 issues of quarantine from those two positive cases today. Thirty-seven close contacts with two positive cases, at least that's what he said came through his office, he was driving at the time, so.
I believe on case reports today, we were reported one positive case that actually was not a student for Quaker Town. And I believe the case he's referring to with the close contacts that came through today was. And I believe the case he's referring to with the close contacts that came through today was actually a case that the case that closed dryer. That the contact tracing was completed yesterday, and I believe it had in the twenties for close contacts.
So
And yesterday we had eight, Chris, eight or nine or ten, something like that.
So the question I have isn't it how many cases we have? Because either way, what we're finding and the data that we're getting from Palisades and Pen Ridge and the tech school is very similar to ours. With the success rates of our full quarantine compared to their modified quarantine. So in saying that our quarantine is safer than the other quarantines isn't necessarily, you know, data wise, it's it's not. It's the same thing, you know? If we would have started the year saying we're going to quarantine people for a month if they were a close contact. And we're going to social distance at twelve feet. Well, sure, we would have probably had very similar results to what we have now. That isn't to say that we had started the year doing the right thing. So the fact that Pen Ridge has been doing this and they've, they've had fifteen hundred students to our nine hundred all modified quarantine. And have very similar results with how many kids have come back positive. So that that's where where I'm saying is we have been doing a good job and we've been doing it right. To to our perspective. But that doesn't mean that we were doing the best possible thing that we could have been doing for our students and still keeping them safe. Much like how Pen Ridge has been doing it. Like I said, they have more students than us placed under modified quarantine. Then we had based on full quarantine have the same results, but they didn't have nine hundred students missing out on on school. And if if you multiply nine hundred students by an average of a ten day quarantine because for the first two and a half marking periods, we were quarantining for fourteen days. You know, that's nine thousand days of education that our students missed.
Believe me, I know. I'm the person who goes through all of those cases and calls all of those parents.
So, so this is the other thing I was gonna let you know, Nurse Kelly, that if we implement modified quarantine. Your your letter today that or Dr. Harner shared an email with us with your concerns, and I'm not sure if they were yours or you know, the nursing staff's concerns. One of them was, and and you reiterated it here, being overworked, being overburdened. And 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 being at the the wrong end of yelling parents when you tell them that their kid can't come to school for the next ten days. Well, a lot of that goes away if we implement modified quarantine. You won't have parents yelling at you when you tell them that their kids can come back to school if they wear a mask and and they practice a little bit better social distancing. You know, they they not, they may skip their mask breaks, you know, as part of the modified quarantine. You're not going to get those parents yelling at you. Your workload is not going to increase any. Because you you will not have any, any other duties. Except you just won't have to tell those parents their kids can't come to school. So, so we're not increasing your workload to this. And in fact, hopefully, we would be making it a little bit easier. And with the attestation changes that we're proposing, that would even make your job even more easy because at two cases, say in an elementary school, when we hit two cases, we do the contact tracing, we then do the sanitization and it starts our fourteen day cycle over. Before, so you won't have to rush to get that last bit done, so the school doesn't have to close. You know, you'll have another two cases still in the bag that you could wait until we have to close that school. So these two changes that we're proposing could actually lessen your workload, make your job more more less stressful, so you won't have parents yelling at you. And we would get more of our students back in school and not expose them to any more danger based on the data we've gotten from Pen Ridge. Which is a much larger district than ours. It's fifty percent larger.
It's my understanding Pen Ridge hasn't been back in school as long at the secondary level as we have.
But they've had more
They were hybrid.
And we have, we've, they've had more students back than we've had as a whole.
Level, that is, that is true.
It is true that they were hybrid at the at the high school level, but they they've had more.
And and being hybrid at the high school level would decrease the number of close contacts you have because you have the ability to have more spacing. And I do agree with you that it might decrease my workload, but it it I still have to contact trace those cases. I still have to contact those parents. And if spread begins to happen even more, then I'm going to have more cases to trace and more
Clearly hypothetical, and if that happens, much like Keith said or John said, then we could dial that back. But, you know, I I believe and and the data is showing that there's no more spread, that the rate of spread in those school districts is no higher than ours. So that's what Dr. Damsker can give all those numbers. The rate of spread in Pen Ridge, in Palisades, at the tech school is no higher than ours. So what are we really doing? And and I'm not saying we're unnecessarily doing it. Most of this is for peace of mind. It's for your peace of mind. It's for the teacher's peace of mind. And I'm not saying that now that everybody is is vaccinated. We could do that, but we are not doing anything to make anything any safer based on the data, based on the science. So that's why I believe that that we should move to modified quarantine and we absolutely have been miss miss interpreting the attestation process from the beginning. The Pennsylvania Department of Health would not have issued a range if they wanted us to close when we hit the minimum. They would have given us a solid number to close at. They gave a range for a reason. And the other school districts, and I'm not sure what what Dr. Harner heard today. But and actually Jeff Garten could answer the question. I was going to bring that up before. If whether or not Central Bucks is following that attestation range.
Unfortunately, I don't know at the moment.
Okay, alright, so maybe you can't answer that question.
Bucks has not had a lot of school closures, that's for sure.
Yeah. So, so I I believe that what we would be doing is is helping your workload. Making, getting more students back into school and not exposing anyone to any additional risk. And if if we did see more risk because of our actions, then we would be swift to make the change to correct that.
Ron, you've been awfully quiet.
Does anybody else want to go first, or do you want me to put my foot in my mouth right now?
Do it.
Do it gently.
Alright, at the last board meeting, the words that came out of my mouth that I've had quoted back to me a number of times were that this virus is no different than the flu. I stand by those words in the context in which they were given, the context being the chance of death. And I'll use that word specifically, the chance of death regarding this virus. For those individuals who are not the elderly or people with preexisting condition is no different than the flu. That is statistically obvious to anybody who's looked at the science and the data. That cannot be disputed. So the question becomes how does that apply to our students? The administration, unfortunately, and we as a board are bound by dictates of people outside of our control. We have to bow to what the Department of Health says to what some school leaders say, to what the governor has mandated and so forth and so on. Nurse Kelly's workload is high because she has to do things that in my personal belief are unnecessary. What I mean by that is we've had the flu virus in our schools for I don't know how many years, probably since as long as we've had schools. People get sick. They stay home when they're sick. Nobody says that child had the flu. We need to go through a contract tracing to determine who else they've come in contact with. Why? Because the flu is not considered a particularly dangerous virus. This virus is, why? Because the chance of dying from this virus is severe. If you're an elderly person or person with preexisting conditions. And we worry about our loved ones when children may become susceptible to the virus and bring it home. My question to everybody here is, and John has alluded to this, and Nurse Kelly mentioned something she probably doesn't even realize she said it. That we should keep these protocols in place and get through the end of the year and see what it looks like next year and what we proceed with there. The assumption being that this administration and its staff, its nurses, its custodial staff, everybody is gearing up for the same kind of scenario next year. That we're going to be dealing with a world that even next year is going to be considering which students have this virus. Contact tracing, keeping six foot separate or your social distancing. And it's absurd. The risk analysis, we've used that word. That's what we do every day in a thousand different little transactions when we walk down the street, when we drive in our car. We assess the risk to us. The risk to the students, to the staff, to the administration, to everybody on this call that I know of, I don't know who's the elderly or the, you know, people with preexisting conditions. The risk to these individuals is so negligible to not warrant the extreme measures we are implementing. But again, it's outside of our control. We have to do it. I would argue that we need to push back as a community and say, okay, fine, we'll give you this year. This year's a wash. You know, but Lord help us if we have to come back in the fall in this same manner. To Nurse Kelly's point, I believe that the the nurses are overworked. I can't imagine the the stress they go for, go through to do this. I appreciate everybody's desire to get the kids back in school. I really do. And that's exactly what we all want. And you, it's pretty clear if you listen to what I'm saying. That I think it's ridiculous that we're even have a modified schedule. Let alone this closure of schools and all this. However, I believe we are so far into this school year, there's no point to change now. Let's just get over the hurdle and get done. Chris, I and everybody else who wants to change the modified, it's really not going to have that much of a, of a, of a, of a, an effect on the school closures, on the number of children.
We have two hundred children now.
Chris, Chris, I've heard, I've heard it, Chris. I know what your points are. I've heard, I get it. I'm just saying from my perspective, there's no point in changing now. We need to get through this school year and work with our legislatures and everybody else and come fall. Why in the world would we, a child get sick even from the COVID virus? The danger to that child is negligible. It's almost insignificant. The danger to a staff member is negligible, almost insignificant. Why would we contract trace? Why would we force these children to get tested? I don't, I have a second. This is my own personal belief. I don't get it. And again, when does it end? I mean, John alluded to this. Are we literally going to be a society that goes for the rest of our lives? With this virus reacting in this manner, the next virus reacting in the same diluted manner. Every single virus that comes down the pipe from now on, is this the new norm? Lord, help us if it is.
Ron, I don't know where you're getting your statistics from. I'd be happy to sit down and go over them with you. But thi- this is not the flu. Annual flu deaths rate from range anywhere from twenty to sixty thousand annually. Go on to CDC.gov and read it, read the reports. There's a lot of cases of flu, but not a lot of death. There's over a half a million deaths in America right now from 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 in from COVID. So please, or do this, do me a favor and share your data with me. Because I'd be happy to look at it because I could be wrong. But I think, I think you're misstating things, dude. Listen, I think you're misstating things. I don't disagree. You can have your opinion on the virus, but you can't mistake the facts. If you have facts, share them with the board.
Ke- Keith, I was very clear, very clear. And the first thing I said that this virus is no different from the flu. Two children, two people who are not elderly and with preexisting conditions. I was very clear on that. Very clear.
I do not dispute. True, that's not The high risk people are more vulnerable, but it is killing other people that have no, that have no respect. I'd be happy to go through your data with you, but you can't continue to say this.
You and I could talk numbers all day long. I believe
I'd be happy to.
I I believe what I'm saying is
Bring science, send me the data that you have, and I'd be happy to review it with you.
I'll just chime in one thing. Actually, flu affects young children. It can, it kills more young children than COVID. I'll just, you know.
I I I don't disagree that flu has an impact, but there there are, there are cases of flu death. There is no doubt about it. I've seen it. I've seen it in young kids. But you, but we can't keep spewing like bad information to the community. And and this is a, this is a I mean, we we have to be, we have to continue our cautious approach. Not saying we have to, you know, continue with the 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 path of of making sure we're the safest we could be. I think we can loosen things up a little bit. But I think we need to continue to stress the importance of staying protected and being smart about the way we're approaching this, which I think we have been as a board. We could disagree on this topic, but I think we've, we've been, we've been approaching things, trying to use science the best that we can. Trying to use logic to the best that we can and trying to make the best decision weighing all our options.
Hey, Ron, I was just wanting to speak.
Really quick, Ron, are you saying you're not going to support modified quarantine?
You know, w- w- let's wait until the vote comes. If it, if it actually comes to a vote, we'll see what the vote is. But at this point in time, personally, I just don't see the point.
Ron, I'm so
Hold on, Kaylin, I I got this one.
Okay, wait, just let me say one thing.
Alright.
Ron, I'm having a hard time here because you and I have had private conversations. Where you have told me you definitively will support this. And now, now you're changing your mind. Why?
You know, again, I'll let, bring it to a vote. Let's see where the vote goes and, you know, you know, if you want me to vote last, I'll vote last, but to to my way of thinking, again, this isn't going to have a significant effect on this school year if we do not institute modified, modified quarantine. And I I feel bad, I feel really bad for the nurses because I do believe they're overwhelmed. I just believe they're overwhelmed because they're doing things that are pointless. Keith, we don't need to go into again. But
But but our job, and this is something that you and I spoke of, we speak of this a lot. Is that our job is to educate our kids and to keep them in our schools. And we know the detriment and the harm that happens when we don't keep them in our schools.
Right, but the 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 difference between now and what I envision next year is right now, students have an option to come in live or stay virtual, okay? One of the biggest things we all saw in that presentation today were a lot of kids just flat out skipping school. Okay? I mean, if we No, I I did say it was the only reason. There's a big, that's a big reason. Those children who have parents who are excessively concerned about the virus. If we choose to go modify quarantine, I think they'll just keep their kids home. You'll have a lot of people jumping from in person to virtual and you'll have the same result.
We're not seeing that in other districts who have implemented this, though. Where is
Again, I mean, I support the modified quarantine. I really do. I also think to myself, what's the point at this stage of the game?
Kids in school.
Ron, I'm going to tell you what the point is. If you want the kids to come back next year, we have to start, spread that now because if not, if we don't start it now, next year, they're going to want to start school with this archaic quarantine system that we're dealing with now.
I've said my piece and I've heard everybody's side. Who else has something? Dave, Dave, I haven't heard
Yeah, Dave and Dave and Brian, we need to hear from.
Dave, do you want to go? You guys know my position. I I've never believed that modified quarantine was a good idea. I still don't. And I think Ron's right in that I don't know that if you did change, it would make a big difference. But all that aside, I just want to come out and I want to say thank you to the teachers, the staff, the the nurses and administrators who are in the building. They've had a challenging year. We've given them a lot of additional challenges to make their jobs harder throughout the year. They are overworked. They are tired, I'm sure. And I want to recognize them for the efforts that they've put in. And for the things that they've done to make sure that students are succeeding as best they can. Um, and for the things that they've done to make, uh, sure that students are succeeding as best they can, so.
So. You know. We kind of went against the grain when we decided to go back, um, you know, and I've always believed that. We did it because everything fit just right, there was just enough space, we could make it work, it was just enough everything and things were different. Um, you know, I would have voted different. I, I kind of agree with all of you that, you know, it's up to us to set the bar and there's times for us to set the bar. And that's what we do as the board and we, we move, you know, the goalposts, it's time to change things. I, I agree with some things that were said by Ron, uh, like notably, I, I'm really not feeling compelled to change it for this year. Um, but I also hear what our nurse said, uh, when she said, you know, it's just the timing. So here's her, here's my position right now, sitting here for all of you, you know, board members. I'm okay with changing it, but it's about timing. Um, I think that if we bought ourselves, uh, an extra three weeks after we come back from, uh, the Easter break. That would make me comfortable enough to maybe go in a different direction and.
There's only ten weeks of school left, Dave.
Look, man.
Five of them.
I'm just trying to understand where are these decisions, what is the, what is the logic? We just said.
I just told you what my logic was.
Nine hundred students and we're keeping these students out of school.
Can we listen to the end of this? Did you finish up, Dave?
Thank you so much, thank you. And, and then that was my logic and this is the way our community feels comfortable right now and that's the way I feel. I understand why you feel the way you feel, you got numbers and you really want to stand by them and you know what? You, you pretty much convinced all of us to make changes, except you want the changes to happen right now. Not in three weeks when people feel a little bit more comfortable.
I wouldn't mind negotiating a different timeline, in fact, when I discussed this modifying quarantine with Dr. Harner. He and I both agreed that we would not start the modified quarantine until April eighth. Which gave every, um, staff member the opportunity to be vaccinated in two weeks additional from that time. From them being vaccinated to be immune. And Dr. Harner told me that the administration supported that. In fact, he sent out an email to the community that said that he and the administration supported modified quarantine. Based on what we know now that we could, he would support that starting April eighth.
And that is all absolutely, absolutely factual, but the, our, our, our nurse said. Well, if you want to hear some of what she has to say, which she said you were open to hearing, she basically straight out told you. After people get back from the holiday break, if people are going to be mingling, there's going to be another fourteen-day rolling window where people are going to be getting sick.
But Dave, he also told us not to come back to school, not to come off of.
Hey, look, I'm not telling you to listen to everything she says, but you know, there is validity to things that she says. And, you know, everyone offers really great information here and, you know, you need to take the good parts, Chris.
So you're saying you wouldn't feel comfortable April eighth, but you would feel comfortable mid-April?
I, I may, yeah, absolutely, maybe if we give ourselves to the twenty-first or something like that, it'll give. It seems like it would give everybody a little bit more time.
It's a tax day.
What's the start of the fourth marking period?
Kaylin, may I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, a couple of times they've mentioned tonight that the, uh, nurses were consulted and, and the nurses have asked that. Uh, when we make decisions, we consult with them, so we have another meeting on the.
April eighth, sure.
April eighth.
Yes, sir.
Could we have a presentation from the nurses or could we have a conversation with the nurses at that meeting? Uh, to hear their concerns and then make a judgment based on as much of the evidence and as much of the facts as we can get.
This is what we did the last three times.
We sure did. Oh my god.
We shouldn't do that.
I would say, but to, but to Brian's point, what, where I thought you were going, Brian, is what if we say, all right, um. Nurse Kelly thought, uh, April eighth sounded a little too soon. How about we do April fifteenth and then if you want to have a conversation at the next, at the April eighth. Now that we publicly put it out there, we want to go modify quarantine, April fifteenth. And we'll monitor if there's any kind of spikes, we'll pull it back.
Yeah, that's sort of what I was going for, my suggestion was going to be April eighth and then if we decide to modify at that point. Uh, I don't know how quickly that can change.
I'm gonna.
Just wait till there's one week of school left.
I'm going to put a motion on the table right now that we introduce modified quarantine to begin, um, starting April fifteenth.
I'll second it.
And if anything changes, we always, guys, remember, we always have the opportunity to change this. We can always introduce another meeting, we can evaluate this on a bi-weekly basis. And if we see any issues, we can make changes.
We are meeting on the eighth.
We are, but I want to get this vote in now and then that way, um. We at least give some direction on where we want to go. I don't want us to wait till the eighth to implement something one week later. I'd rather go ahead and, and get the vote on the record and give the opportunity, um.
Kaylin, Ms. Edwards has a comment.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to add a couple of things to the discussion. Our nurses stand at the intersection of the medical expertise and the school expertise. Um, which none of the rest of us really have both sides of that equation. So we have people on the board that have some medical expertise, we have administrators that have school expertise. The nurses are at the, at the intersection of all of that. Um, I don't think their concerns are just related to their workload. Um, I also don't agree that implementing modified quarantine would reduce their workload. Because at the operational level, creating the procedures and communicating them to families and working through. All of the individual questions that arise based on individual circumstances is what adds time. Please don't interrupt me. Um, so the, the, um, modified quarantine is not like we just snap our fingers. Uh, the, all procedures will have to change, communications will have to change. Logistics will have to change, we don't have six feet separation in any building. So, no masks breaks at elementary, I'm not sure where these children eat lunch. Do we segregate them to eat lunch? Are we allowed to do that? Where do we put them? Because we already don't have room for our elementary students to necessarily safely eat lunch. So it is not a small change, so I just wanted to, um, point out that there is more to it than that. And the other point that I wanted to make and one of you referenced it. Um, you know, our administrators and counselors and teachers have been working very, very hard to get. Some of our virtual students who are not being successful in that environment to come back to live school. The health and safety plan is certainly not the only factor that is impacting. Those students or those families' decisions, I am certain that, that there are multiple factors and it. Um, some very complex situations, but it certainly is one factor. Um, and I, I do know that our nurses often speak to parents that are considering bringing a child back live. To reassure them about the health and safety protocols that are in place. So at the end of the middle school presentation, the question was asked, what can you, you know, is there anything that the board can do? To help? And I am not sure that, that relaxing some of the requirements of the health and safety plan is going to. Make the job of all the people that are trying to get those kids back to live school, um, any easier.
Well, Nancy Anne, I appreciate your opinions, but when I asked it specifically of the, the school principals. Um, neither of them mentioned that. Uh, as, as part of the, uh, thing, so I, I do, I do believe that's, that's your opinion and you're allowed to have it. I think it's, it's, you know, I'm not disagreeing with your opinion, uh, but neither of them mentioned that. Um, in their presentation, and so I do feel that, uh, my question was pointed towards. Uh, understanding, uh, the why behind it and, uh, and they showed some other very compelling things like. The kids that are most vulnerable, who we have been gravely concerned about are the ones vastly affected by that. And I think the community should hear that presentation as well. Um, because as they, they pointed out, these were the, the, the lower socioeconomic kids. That are vastly being affected by what is happening right now in public schools. And I can't imagine we're in an island by ourselves. And that has been my concern, not only with our own district, but with our state and quite honestly, our nation. That the people that are going to suffer the most through this pandemic are the ones that are most vulnerable.
And when you quarantine those, those slower socioeconomic students, a lot of times, they are being left alone, home alone. They are being asked to care for their siblings, so do we really believe that they're safer that way? And, and, and so let's just, let's just go ahead and go with the vote because the motion is on the floor. Again, I'll remind the board of the motion, this will need to be a roll call.
I was just, can I just say one, one more thing, uh, off of Nancy Anne's comment, I, I was just going to say. There's also an argument to be made that as we demonstrate. At least a trend towards full in-person, you know, back to normal type school and. And have an opportunity to move, I know Chris wants it tomorrow, maybe three, you know, I, I heard you, Chris, saying, yeah, we'll do it. You know, a week left of school, but the idea is there's also a compelling reason to say that will keep. Other families who are concerned about not being in person and looking to go somewhere else. That might give them hope that we're moving in the right direction of getting in-person school and not. Sending them home every other, you know, cough and sneeze, even though that's an exaggeration, I apologize, but that's another angle to consider.
Thank you. All right, Terry, can we get a roll call for this, please?
I'm sorry, would you please explain once again what we're voting?
Sure, so the motion on the floor is to vote to implement modified quarantine. Starting on April fifteenth, a vote for yes would mean that we would modify cor- uh, modified. Sorry, we would modify our health and safety plan to implement the modified quarantine. Um, starting on that date and I'll remind everyone that that would be approximately three weeks. After every staff member would have an opportunity to be vaccinated.
The administration recommends against the motion.
Why did you recommend, why did you agree to?
All right, let's just vote, let's just vote, we, we've heard, we've heard this again, we've, we've, we've read the emails, we've, we've, we appreciate your input.
Thank you, sir.
Let's vote, but I just want to state for the record, the administration did support this. Um, and I have no idea why they are backing out at the last minute, so let's go ahead and vote, Terry.
Get in an email, ma'am.
You shared that you supported it.
Call the question.
And now you don't.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway.
Okay, Mr. Reimers?
No.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mr. Akmadowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
And the motion passes six to two.
Thank you all for that spirited conversation, I realize that these types of conversations. Can get a little bit heated, so thank you all for bearing with us as we navigate through this process, the next item.
Say that, uh, you know, on the eighth at our meeting, can, can we review the current numbers as of the eighth?
I have, I think we should do it every meeting.
All right. Oh, we should, we should, we should also have, we should also have asked Dr. Dan's going to be here to clarify that, that, the, the. The data that we're hearing, uh, and, and the other thing is, again, I, I employ that we can pivot at any point, so. Uh, I think we need to, uh, uh, understand what, what's going on because we're not, we're not either, we're not getting some information somewhere along the line.
Yeah, I agree, I think I'll invite him, um, sometime. You know, maybe at our next meeting, just to, to try to get to the root of some of these misunderstandings, so it's a good point. Um, all right, so the next item that I do want to, to bring up, um, I want to motion this for. Uh, I want to put a motion on the floor that we direct the administration to work within. The larger end of the ranges that are being presented from the attestation. And to not trigger, um, a closure until we reach the maximum number. Of cases within the fourteen-day rolling period.
Well, Kaylin, can I further clarify that by saying? That we should perform our contact tracing and cleaning at, when we hit the low end. And not close until we hit the high end. And that way, if we do our contact tracing and cleaning at the low number, it resets our fourteen-day rolling period.
And that's the way it should be working, so if we have two cases, let's just give an example, there's two cases at the elementary school. Let's say that the first case, um, that we've already done the contact tracing and the cleaning. Then that case should not count in the fourteen-day rolling average and it does state that within, um. The, the guidance, if you take a look at that, it says you are able to work with your public health department. To minimize, um, the number of days that you would need to close. If you are able to complete the contact tracing and the sanitizing that is necessary. So if we have, sometimes what's happening in these situations is, let's say you have two cases at an elementary school. Let's say the case number two that triggered the closure, that student likely has not been in that school for a couple of days at least. So, we're having that child, that child has been in school for those last couple of days. And then we're saying, as soon as the case comes back positive, that we're triggering a closure. And I, I don't see how that makes, um, anyone safer. It's, it's a major disruption, if you think about it from, if you're a parent of an elementary school student. You're finding out late at night that your student is going to be virtual the next day. That is extremely disruptive, there, there has been, I want to remind the board. That the policy director from the PA Department of Health has stated that we have absolute flexibility within that range. And that they advise us to work with our local health department to implement that. So I'll need a second. Um, for the motion that's on the floor.
Who's put the motion up?
I did.
Oh, then I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
Can I ask a question? There was a comment about, uh, during the public comment that some of the schools were not being cleaned thoroughly. Yeah, even overnight.
The Charlotte and Bakersfield Borough. That was Charlotte and Bakersfield Borough and I wrote that question down specifically because I'd like an answer to it as well.
It's a good question.
Um, so can someone speak to that at all? Because that, going back to what Kaylin was talking about, I think that would be a, a pretty significant factor.
Brian, I, I do remember in the beginning of the year, um.
I'm asking the administration to speak to.
Well, I, I was just going to bring up an example of what they, they said in the beginning of the year, that cleaning is not necessarily sanitizing. And because they're doing extra sanitation, some cleaning may not be done. So things may look dirtier and trash cans may not be emptied. And that's in some cases what some teachers and staff members are seeing.
Appreciate that, Chris, but that's why I'm asking the administration, who might have some knowledge about. The situation that the person was referring to.
This occurred last week while you were, um, where you were away, so I can address it if you would like.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
The person's comment is accurate.
Oh, we're having a hard time hearing you, is it just me?
No, can't hear her either.
I can't hear you.
We lost her, we lost her voice.
Nancy?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The person's comment, uh, that was submitted is accurate. We learned through a teacher complaint, um, at Strayer Middle School. That then I give, um, great credit to the administration there who dug into. Videos and other evidence to try to confirm or deny what the, the teacher's concern about the sanitizing process. That is supposed to take place in every building every night. And what they found is that that process was not taking place. Um, we immediately met with, um, the custodial contractor. Uh, the next day, Zach was able to arrange a meeting with, uh, some higher. Uh, the next day, Zach was able to arrange a meeting with, uh, some higher levels of, um, SSC and immediately remedied the situation. We put a temporary plan in place where our own facilities people are doing the sanitizing each day so that we had, would have full confidence that it was being completed until staff and process changes could, could, um, take place. And there is a contract credit for that in case anyone is worried about that, um, aspect of it. So they did take immediate action. And to be transparent, we communicated with the staff in every building about that situation so that we would not lose the trust of our, um, staff members about the sanitizing process and, and what had happened.
Ms. Edwards, are you aware of any other incidents? Was this a one-time thing? Was there, were there other incidents like this?
I believe it is, it was recent. I believe it did impact multiple buildings at various times. So I, you know, I don't have evidence to support any particular number of times or number of cases where it did not take place properly, but we do believe that it was, uh, on more than one occasion.
And I will just state, and I don't mean to be out of line, but I believe at Nighting Elementary School, they have not had so-called deep cleaning, um, in a significant period of time. So one thing I just want to point out is that what we have learned about this virus, what is very important for us to realize is that this virus spreads via droplets. And what we've learned is that surface spread is very rare. And I do feel like it's the right thing to do absolutely to be sanitizing as much as possible because it lowers the risk. But the sanitizing, um, the surface spread is very minimal.
The staff complaints or, um, anything like that as a result of the emails that each principal sent out. So I think everyone's comfortable at this point that it is definitely being done. And we did communicate transparently when it, when we found out that it wasn't.
That's awesome. Cause bad, bad news never ages well. So good job just jumping on it and being transparent.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts from the board on, um, utilizing the higher end of the range versus the low end?
Can you confirm that this is essentially directing the administration that they must use the highest number within the range at all times?
That is my opinion. Um, I don't know if any board members have any objections to that.
That's the motion you put on the floor.
Yes.
I had another question for Mr. Garten, if I could. Mr. Garten, are there any other solicitors who, uh, share your opinion about the administration's risk in this?
Well, I think I shared what I said before is that this is a board decision and the administration as commissioned officers are not making the decision if they're concerned about that.
Right. And I took that to be your, um, uh, assessment. But are you using any precedent from other, uh, districts or other solicitors?
Frank, I did not have a chance to double check that. I just know from my experience.
Because that would, that would concern me if, uh, and I apologize if this offends, but if you're wrong, then we're putting them in a, a position where they're, they're going against the recommendations from the Department of Education and, uh, threatening their commissions and that.
Department of Education does not have any authority in this order.
Department of Health.
This is the Department of Health order and, and, and Mr. Garten, am I correct?
It's a Department of Health criteria, yes.
So.
People that are in charge of the commissions would be the Department of Education.
Right, but they're, the Department of Education does not have any enforcement of this order. This is a Department of Health order. It is enforced by the Department of Health. And if any, just to your point, maybe to, to sort of, um, give you some peace of mind, Brian, um, from what I am aware of, there have not been, um, very many closures within the county utilizing the low end of the range. And if, if that were to be the case, that they would be in jeopardy, then I'm sure that we would have seen such, such consequences happening. And we did get that assurance from the Department of Health. The Department of Health is who has the authority due to the Pennsylvania state code, and they have given us assurance that we can use the range.
And it's monitored and, and, um, administered by the County Department of Health here, which is Dr. Damsker. He's the one that has to, to verify our contact tracing.
So I just want to ask the administration, who at the Department of Education has been telling you all that this is, that, that we must close at the low end of the range?
Ma'am, um, it was several months ago, December timeframe, December, January, so I don't have a name. I confirmed it again with the, the COVID person at PDE today, and she said it's the, uh, as soon as you hit that low, low number. But you're gonna vote to change it. So, uh, long as, that, long as Mr. Garden and the board protect the, the three commissioned officers in the district, um, I'd be grateful and will implement your vote.
I just thought I would ask since.
My observation is, what's the point of a range then?
Right.
That's exactly it.
Uh, it just like we talked about several times, how things have evolved. That was the first thing they put out. And, and I, as I recall the conversation, it's December or January timeframe. They, they regretted putting that out. But also December, January, there were very few districts that were even open in the county, um, for live instruction. They were only, only virtual. So as you all know, we're, we're, I'm very proud, the administration is very proud. We're the tip of the spear for setting the example. And, and we have only had, uh, Ms. Edwards or Zach or somebody, uh, Dr. Hoffman. I think we've only had maybe six, six closures. So we've had very few, just like everybody else, uh, the other districts who have, um, used the attestation. But I know I'm, as long as you provide a little support for us, I'm, I'm good.
I, I was just gonna say, you know, one, once again, we're faced with time to have observed something that, that came out to your point. You know, they're around the, however, many months ago. With an odd concept that, yeah, we're giving you a range, but we really meant the lower one. Okay. Well, that makes no sense, but it's probably because they're just making it up a little bit. And we're at that, that juncture where we get to decide. Is it, like I would ask, what I'm interested in, like, for example, Nancy Ann, if, if we were to, might, might, might not be possible, but I like to think that from a, from a engineering modeling simulation point of view, we, we exercise the, you know, we had certain incidences and we exercised the algorithm at the lowest possible threshold. Had we exercised it at the higher threshold, would that have meant three closures instead of six? And it's really about going forward. Are we?
Probably will result in more closures, which seems counterintuitive.
That's why I wanted to ask.
Well, not if we had cleaned it, contact traced.
Yeah, just a minute, Chris, because I, I, that's kind of my mind works through the simulations and, and you run it both ways and you see what, what do the numbers look like? Cause is it, so I'm interested in your response to that kind of modeling idea.
The, the strategy we've been utilizing, which means that most of the time, we don't actually have to lose a day of live instruction is to, to utilize weekends, to utilize holidays. And when we see we're coming up on a number, prepare for it. Uh, and that's why we've really minimized the, I think there's only one building has lost two days over the entire time period. And, and several other buildings have lost a single day. Now, what we saw happen in the last, um, couple of weeks is that, that two, we did everything we needed to do to be able to reopen. And by the time the letters were prepared, we were up to four, which is the top of the range anyway. So what Mrs. Kelly reported of, of getting more, more cases and them coming more in clusters, that has an impact on this process as well. But the advantage of doing it that way is you reset to zero quickly. So it's where we have an opportunity to reset to, declare the closure and reset to zero quickly.
But why do we have to close to reset? And that, this is what I'm not understanding.
Asterisk. The asterisk is when you can complete all the requirements, you minimize the length of the closure. Sometimes the closure is zero days. Sometimes it's a Saturday. Sometimes it's a holiday. And like, sometimes it's zero days.
Couldn't we do our three Cs at one case or?
That's what I'm saying.
And then reset it every time we get one case.
Yes.
Here, this is the, what the nurses are talking about, where the things that you say have a tremendous impact on the workload of the nurses and the custodians that I don't know is fully appreciated.
They're doing that anyway. The things you say have a direct result on our kids not being in schools. That's what's been going on here.
The bottom line, if we have, if we have one case and we have done the contact tracing and we have done the sanitizing, does that case still count in our fourteen day? I'm asking the administration.
We don't do it at one, one case.
Do what, sir?
We don't do the three Cs at one case for the, for, the first case in a fourteen day window at a school. We do not do the, uh, close the building.
No, no, no. I'm not asking about the closure. I'm saying when we get the first case and we have done that contact tracing and we have sanitized the building, do we still count that one case in the fourteen day average?
Yes, because that is the definition of when a case counts.
But that is not, see, that's not my interpretation. My interpret.
Cleaning is different than the nightly sanitizing. And we do not have the personnel to deep clean every building every night to make sure that we are always a hundred percent deep cleaned.
Well, we know that that deep cleaning sounds like it's not happening anyway, but what? What is the logic behind the deep cleaning? We know that it's not spreading through surfaces.
Because that is what the school district attested to, that it would complete prior to reopening school after a certain number of COVID cases.
I'm sorry, does the, does, does the, does it say that we are required to do deep cleaning or does it say that we're required to clean and disinfect?
The definition of deep cleaning is based on what it's, it links to in the attestation that the requirements are for whatever the terminology is they used in it.
I, I'm trying to find.
School says that they're deep cleaning every room every night so they can reset their, their fourteen day rolling, rolling, uh, period every time they contact trace.
I can't speak to what other places are doing.
We paid for that, Chris.
I, I understand we did, but so did Pen Ridge somehow. You know, I, I, I believe that when you have one student that's in one room, especially in an elementary school, you could deep clean that one room as part of the nightly cleaning and then reset our fourteen day rolling forecast. That's what this is all about. The contact tracing is being done.
Would tell you that our facility staff is staying ahead of this as best as they possibly can.
But you're waiting.
I have, I have an idea. Uh, is, is there a way that, uh, we could somehow, like, I, I don't know, Chris or Caitlin, if, for example, if we move it to, from, from the low end of the range to the top end of the range. What, I guess what I'm looking for is some metrics. We, we already haven't had that many closures to date, as Nancy Ann, uh, points out. And you know, what, what are the, what's the impact of, of shifting it? What, like, what do you think we'll be accomplishing? Uh, in the next X number of months until schools close. And I wonder from, from Chris and Caitlin, if you, if you had an idea about what you think will prevent and Nancy Ann, same, same question as you would be on the other side, what do you think it would cause? Of course, it's a little bit of a hypothetical without doing a simulation. But what, I'm just curious, is, is there any way to have a rational discussion about, I think it'll be seven. I think it'll be two or like.
What I, what I don't understand is how, how is, how are these other school districts managing to avoid closures? But we can't.
Well, most of them weren't open or they were.
No, no. Let's talk about Palisades, Pen Ridge, Upper Bucks, since they're all around here. They, and, and this is where Dr. Damsker could really come into handy right here when talking about this. Is those school districts that, to my knowledge, have not had to close one day due to meeting the case count thresholds and they're able to restart that clock a lot more efficiently than what we're utilizing. And so.
Palisades is likely experiencing very few cases simply because their social distancing is it, it is exceedingly easy because their population is so low. So it's highly probable, they just don't get the number of cases we might encounter simply because everybody's six feet apart because they got that space.
It's not coming from in the school.
Yeah, it's two cases in a school. And they are going until they get four cases in a school.
Right.
So that is the, that's the big difference there. And when they get two cases in a school, they sanitize, they contact trace and reset their clock before they would ever get to four. That's, that's the difference that we're not doing.
Chris, just one of the things to be pointed out is you were kind of balking when we were talking about adding a transportation official to the administration. Now we're talking about significant increase in our cleansing ability with limited staff. So are you ready to spend that much money to guide digital staff?
I don't, I don't know that that's accurate, though.
It's not.
So let's just vote on it because, look, guys, all we're asking is that, that, that we use the range that is offered to us. We're not.
May I offer, uh, uh, an amendment perhaps? That we table this until we can meet with facilities and with nursing to get a better understanding of what exactly it's going to do in those situations. And have them come in and, and maybe talk to us about how it would impact them.
And Dr. Damsker.
And, and perhaps Dr. Damsker.
But there's no need to, to table this. We'll just vote. If you don't want to vote for it, we won't vote for it.
Listen, guys, we're talking about the, it's a very small range of difference. We're asking the administration, instead of using two, to use four. This is not some huge increase. Uh, and when we're talking about the high school, um.
The reason I'm asking, uh, for this delay is because there seems to be a disparate, uh, discrepancy between what it's going to do specifically to the nurses where Chris is saying that there won't be any. And Ms. Edwards is saying there could be significant, uh, change to what the nurses are going to do. I don't know what the answer is, and, and I'd like to hear from the nurses about that.
Does the board have interest in tabling this? Can you, can I hear from other board members?
No.
Can I poll the other board members?
I agree with Brian on this one.
I'm looking at Zach, wondering if he wants to do some modeling and just to, I, I mean, mathematical modeling, not, not like suit modeling, although you do pretty well at that. It, it's, I still, I'd, I'd like to, it's always been that way for me is this, this felt relatively arbitrary even from the beginning. And I've always been curious about, even if we took our historical data and ran it through, what if we had had four? What would that have done to the six closures? Would it have turned into three or would it have turned into nine? Don't know, because I don't, didn't run the numbers. But it certainly seems like a, a fairly low risk to me, the two to four, because once again, if there's something that goes awry, we'll, we'll jump on it. And Nancy Ann, what do you think the risk is? Do you think it, the risk is more closures?
I, I don't think that what I have to say really makes any difference. So I don't, um, I don't really want to argue the point with you.
But no, it was a question, wasn't it?
Well, I, I explained what I thought, how it would work.
And I think, yeah.
Multiple times and I, I, um, I don't. The purposes of the board vote, so I would prefer to just have you proceed and, and, um.
But that is what you said, right? You thought it could potentially actually increase the number of closures, not, you know, counterintuitively.
Could go either way, but I, counterintuitively, I think it's more likely to increase them than decrease them.
Okay.
Increases the risk that you fall into the next column, which has, um, greater requirements before you can reopen. So if while you're working on four, you get your fifth, then you're in the next column.
But aren't we doing the contact tracing? But aren't we doing the contact tracing and sanitizing regardless?
I I already said they keep up with it as best they can to stay ahead of the numbers. But when you get four cases at a time and they all count in the rolling 14 days, then you don't have much opportunity to stay ahead of it.
I don't see how closing for one day significantly changes that one way or another. But with all further ado, let's just go ahead and get the vote. The vote, just to clarify, we are asking the administration to use the higher end of the range. We're not asked.
Directing. I think you need to direct us if we're going to be protected from consequences for.
Direct directing.
Not for nothing, but I voted to or I moved to table, and I think that needs to be voted on first.
No, I think the motion has to be on the table first before you can.
I'll second.
No, motion to table, motion to table always takes precedence.
Oh, okay.
And actually, Stephen seconded, didn't he?
No, Ron, did you say second to table it?
I don't believe Steve, I don't think you seconded it. You just asked a question of clarification, correct?
I just gave my opinion that I agreed with Brian. I didn't actually second it.
But I'll second the motion to table it.
Okay, Terry, do you want to go ahead and take a roll call, please?
To table.
Okay, so to table the motion, to table the motion, Mr. Reimers.
Yes.
Mr. Spear.
No.
Mr. Akmanowits.
No.
Mr. Kern.
No, because we can bring it back up later if need be.
Mrs. Mitchell.
No.
Mr. McCucci.
No.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Okay, motion fails. Five to three.
Okay, can we go ahead and then vote on the original motion? Can we do a roll call, please?
Can you reply or remind me what the original motion was?
The motion is to direct the administration to utilize the high end of the range when it comes to the recommendations for the attestation. So a vote for yes would be to vote to direct the administration to utilize the high end of the range. And a vote for no would not be to do that.
Okay, Mr. Reimers.
Without hearing from the nurses or the facilities, I would say no.
Mr. Spear.
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowits.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
No, I would like more data.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McCucci.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
No.
Motion passes five to three.
All right. Moving on to other exciting things, we have.
Implementation date for that, by the way? Did not discuss that.
It's the 15th, wasn't it?
That's not, that was a different vote. This, I believe we could implement directly. I mean, it doesn't, there's no procedural changes here.
We should ask the administration.
Well, to to Mr. Garden, I mean, we just passed that as a motion without a date attached to it. Is it instantly take take effect then?
It takes effect instantaneously because you made the vote tonight. So someone.
There you go.
If you have a different date to implement it, make the motion and vote on the new date.
Obviously, there's a communications requirement for that, and I'll take care of that blog this weekend.
Any other thoughts on that?
Do you need a couple of weeks to implement any?
Would the administration appreciate some time for this?
I'd like, well, thank you. I I'm going to seek counsel here. Zach, Nancy, you have both components to that. My ass, my ass, that is Tuesday.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any new board business?
I want to remind everybody that the tech school seems to be open for business soon. So the services provided by the tech school should be coming available online to everybody slowly but surely, if not already. And the food truck's actually going to be out and about hopefully over the course of the next few months and rolling in the next year and through the summer. So if you have any particular large events that maybe you think are tech school, food truck should be at, maybe reach out to the tech school. There is a new coordinator for that position. So thanks, guys.
Graduation.
Now, the the tech school restaurant and hair salon is open now currently.
For the public, so that's pretty neat.
Maybe they could be at the parade.
I I did offer that they could possibly bring their lunch truck to the musical when they do that in the park. If if that works out.
I want to get a pedicure.
From the lunch truck.
Um, thank you, Dave. Any other new business? All right, moving on to our final public comment. Do we have any final public comment?
There was none submitted to the public comment. There was just some questions in the question and answer, but I'm not sure if you want those read or not.
Uh, let me take a look here.
They're more like comments, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think they need to answer.
Okay, then there's no more public comments.
All right. I'm going to move on then to motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Klein.
Second, Mr. Akmanowits.
All right, thank you all for your patience and hope you have a great night.
Thank you.
My hands, everyone.
Keith, I'll send you some numbers, Keith.
I will.